All right, go to our next one.
All right.
You ready for your pledge allegiance?
Let's go.
Yep.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Paul, the order at.
Yes, sir. Okay, Mr. Dunbar, you want to do a roll call, please?
Absolutely. Tom Muhler.
Here.
Ken Dunbar, here.
Bart Garble, here.
John Locke.
Here.
Ken Riley.
Yo.
John Terrace.
Here.
Steve Weaver.
Here.
Kurt Harder.
Counselor.
Bart Dunthorne.
I make this motion to excuse the absence.
I'll second that motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carries. All right, everybody get a chance to look over the agenda.
I'm going to adopt the agenda as per my.
Can I get a second?
I'll support that.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carries the adoption. And just a quick read through the minutes from December 29th. This should be in the current packet that was brought out. If there's anything in there that might need to be checked.
The main thing was just the adoption of the approval of.
That is December 29th?
Yeah.
Did you want change something or?
No.
You're just making sure it's there.
Yep, that was the main, that was the whole reason.
Yep.
Okay, I'll make a motion to accept the meeting minutes from December 29th that were presented.
All right, can I get a second?
Support.
Support.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carries on that. Do we have any citizens today? Just Mr. Schneider. He's just here to visit. All right, so. Have no citizens comments, so do we need a motion on that or just move along?
Move along.
All right, moving along. Communications.
Communications.
I think all we have is just. Dunbar, do we have? I don't have anything on that. Do what you see here.
Nope.
Okay. All right, moving on, new business. Generation notification of agendas regarding monthly PC meeting.
Uh, yeah, so last month I looked at the notification, the agendas, and I just kind of got jacked up because Donna was in and out with being sick. Amber was in and out being sick and just jumbled around.
Right.
As a general, you know, rule, I think things go out in an orderly manner. I mean, I think we usually get our stuff and it's set up. You know, last month kind of an extra meeting, things we just can't get set up, so. Are you agree with Steve, you know, I mean, it is.
Yeah, I thought it'd be good to do it for everybody, you know, you as a member can submit anything you want for the agenda. Normally agendas go out on Friday before the meetings. Police officer will deliver them to each person individually. It's good just so we know we got, we got one. And what was the other thing? That's basically it. And I would, I would, this is my own practice, but if I'm really wanting something to be in the agenda, I deal with the same person all the time. And that's the one who sends them out of the office here, which in our case, at this point in time, it is Amber.
Yeah, but deputy clerk is really in charge.
She takes care of planning. Donna takes care of the.
Yeah, I mean, it's always, I've, on all years I've been around here, we, I've never not gotten that packet Friday.
Right, I just want to say it's benefit of our, our new members that they understood the process.
It's been a good practice.
And particularly if you want something in there that you want people to see.
Yeah, best shot is to get ahold of Amber and say, hey, let's get it on the agenda.
Just get it to the.
Not to discount your involvement in it.
I mean.
At all, Ken, but I'm just saying for continuity's sake, I want everybody to understand that's the goal to, if you really want to. You want to talk to Ken or Ken wants to commit, of course, we can do that as we've done in the past.
Amber hasn't made a packet in six months. I've, I've done all of the.
You've done the packets?
I've done the packets.
Are you taking the heat off of her?
Yeah, I've done the agendas, I've done packets. Now, that being said, I do check with, I do check with Amber, be like, hey, is there anything, you know, that has been submitted that we need to put on the agenda?
Why are you doing that?
I mean, I think it's a best practice as she's not here. Yeah, I mean, she's not, doesn't have the full scope of what's going on here, and I think.
And you can't tell her what to put on the agenda, you have to do it?
I mean, that seems like an extra step than just typing up the agenda and sending it to her. You know, I, there was last July, there was two or three things that I wanted on the agenda.
Well, well, Ken, good for you that you're stepping up and doing that. I mean, you're taking one thing off of Amber's plate.
Yeah.
But I mean, generally, it's the deputy clerk just handle that.
Right.
And she'll, you know, based on the minutes that are turned in, then she would create an agenda on that.
Yeah.
But if you want to do it, I'm sure that she's not going to have an issue with it. I don't have an issue with it.
I certainly don't have an issue.
I have a question. When you say she's the deputy clerk, is that, I don't, can you go a little bit deeper now?
Okay, Donna is our clerk.
Yep.
Treasurer, okay. Amber is the deputy clerk.
Okay. And that, I just, I guess I didn't know that's what our title was. Well, cool. I wrote it down, I didn't know. I thought we dealt with her. It's either one or two of them you deal with when you go to the office.
She's the first person you see when you walk in.
Yeah, you see when you walk in.
Well, I would still like to clarify, if there are documents that you want in there, I'm not going to send them to you, Ken.
I'm dropping them off here and putting them in Amber's hands, you know, if she needs to make copies, that way I know I, they're going to come in for sure.
And that they're leading, and they're being funneled through the office.
I, I totally agree.
And if, you know, somebody else wants to do it differently, it's fine, but it's good to know.
Somebody out of the commission do it, to me, is not a good routine.
I, um.
What if you're ill? Then nobody does it?
And then I just delegate it to?
Well, then Amber could do it. I, I think that a hybrid situation sounds decent. Ken does a really good job, that's a pretty organized guy. Does a good job of putting it together and maybe it could be a hybrid situation where he does that part of the agenda, passes it off, and then everything else.
I'm glad you noticed, I'm very polite.
Feel this, that, that's from.
I just know if I want something going there, I'm giving it to Amber.
Yeah.
Yours is, it's always, it's worked for me for 20 years.
That's why I say a hybrid situation, he can do this part and create the agenda, but then it goes to her to ultimately review it and finalize it, and then everything else that comes into her, she'll add to the packet.
Well, the thing is, is Amber has to have the agenda because it's got to repost to City Hall.
Right.
Yep. And I've, I've been generating 10 copies of every packet, one for all of us, one for City Hall, so they have everything generated.
Hmm.
Um, in our bylaws, the City Hall is listed as the people who will hold the documents.
That's what I was just going to say. The responsibility of the secretary is not to prepare the package, correct? And the agenda?
That, that I do disagree with.
What do the bylaws say about the secretary's duty?
They should generate the packet and the.
They moderate the packet?
And the, and the meeting minutes, or, and the agenda.
Well, the minutes for certain.
Um, let me look up. Secretary's duties. Execute documents in the name of the commission. Be responsible for the minutes of each meeting pursuant to Section 6A of these bylaws if there is not a reporting secretary. I think the confusion here would be the secretary has been acting in a reporting secretary capacity for the last 20 years where they just generated.
Yeah, I would just say that's why I started out.
They just generated the meeting minutes, and I just don't think it's a best practice of business to, for someone not here to be having all of that responsibility on them. Review the draft of the minutes, sign them, and submit them for approval to the commission. Copies of minutes shall be distributed to each member of the commission prior to the next meeting of the commission.
But that doesn't say that it's the secretary's duty.
To.
You, you, you generate the minutes, it doesn't mean that you have to gen, generate copies and distribute them.
Right.
Um, it's, shall be distributed, right. And the secretary may delegate this duty to commission staff, but yeah, to put that there.
It's, it's one of those, it's like, you know, just so you don't have to make, you know, all of the copies and all that stuff. If you generate, if you want to generate the agenda and the minutes and give them to Amber and have her make all the copies here at the City Hall office for everybody.
Yeah.
And then they'd be distributed with the packets.
Can you say that again, I'm sorry?
So, if you want to, I, like you said, in the past, past practice, she'll do the agenda based on what we have in the minutes.
I, there was quite a few times where we specifically put in meeting minutes for things to be added to the agenda, and they were not. And that's why I started making the agenda because like, you know, she has to read and read all of the agenda or minutes and go, okay, this has to be added to the agenda, where I leave a meeting knowing exactly what's on the agenda.
That's fine, I'm just saying that it's not your responsibility to generate copies for everybody.
Yeah, that's.
You can, yeah. Yeah, have Amber make the copies and have the packets set up.
If you want to generate one, then hand it to her and Amber copy it, and have the police to distribute it.
Which that's what we, I mean, other than I've been generating the 10, but the police have distributed it just like, just like standard practice. Um, the, the biggest difference, I think, would be our cutoff is eight days prior to a meeting, so if you want something on the agenda for today, it had to have been presented last Tuesday. Um, that would be the biggest difference, and that's just so that we have time to review things, we don't get to a meeting, and there's.
Well, and you can always add to the agenda if you have any, if you have an agenda in front of you and we go to do the approval or adoption or amendment of the agenda. At that point in time, if I want to add something, say, let's add this to the agenda, and if I have information to go with it, I can hand it out to everybody, or any individual that wants to add on anything. You can do that at the minute when you look at the agenda.
Um, as long as the, as long as the item doesn't require action pursuant to our bylaws, you can, if it is something that would need, we need to make some sort of recommendation or anything like that, we would, we would not be permitted to do that.
Well, I don't want to get us roped into such a constrained box, because things come up.
Yeah, the city council does it on a regular basis, we bring up something during the meeting and it gets put on the agendas because this action is required.
So, if I'm hearing this correctly, is what, what Ken's saying is he doesn't want us to show up today, and there'll be something sitting right here that we weren't aware of prior to today, and we have to vote on it. Is that what I'm saying? You're saying that that information, if it comes here and we didn't have time to review it, because you're supposed to have eight days?
Yep, well, that's, that's.
So if it wasn't there eight days prior, then we technically can't vote on if something's sitting here today. We can review and look at it, we either have to have a special meeting eight days later, or it has to be pushed to next month.
Correct.
Okay, I'm, I'm just trying to understand what we're saying.
However, as Kurt just said, if somebody on this commission wants to add something to the agenda for discussion, if that's in the bylaws that you can't do that, then we have to change the bylaws. Because this is supposed to be a fluid group, and to be prohibited from adding something to the agenda.
Adding so good that it actually requires an action.
That's what I think.
Because of the fact that if an action is required to, you know, for whatever reason, streamline something, move something along, you know, so it's like, bring it up and say, hey, you know what? We need to have this taken care of before next week.
Is there a way?
Whatever it might be.
How can you change that so it could be, well, I mean, that's the question is, because I'm not opposed to something being here and we vote on it, but right now it's kind of going against what our bylaws are, and that's what you're saying.
These are the new bylaws, I take it?
These are the new bylaws.
So, we're not really all that familiar with them to have them all.
Right.
Yeah.
That, this.
It may, may require a little tweaking because, you know.
I mean.
Friday, to me, you get Friday, Saturday, Sunday, Monday, Tuesday, after they've been delivered to you, I don't need more than five days.
No, because I said, when I get it, I, usually as soon as I open it up, I'm, I call you guys, do.
Right.
You get home from work, whatever, whatever it's there, so you, you open it up, you take a look at it, and then I, I looked at the packet versus your email to verify, see what, if it was the same or different, and then I'm pretty prepared for today's meeting.
Yeah, the eight day cutoff requirement is not for commissioners to be able to study the materials, it's for the, me or City Hall to be able to generate the packet. So, if the cutoff is Tuesday, that means Wednesday, we can generate the agenda of the packet, City Hall gets it Thursday, they deliver it to you Friday.
So what can we do to?
Now, that being said, the, the, these are from MSU, and they're, that was verbiage strictly from them. I thought of our commission when reviewing them, and I added the word requiring action, because I know we do like to, I know we do like to go, oh, I have this update that I'd like to give everyone. And we don't want to prohibit the exchange of information or anything like that, we just don't want to get in a situation where we're making decisions based on, or making decisions upon something that we're not prepared for. So, like, for instance.
And, and, and so to that point, if anybody on this board is presented with something that they look at and they don't feel comfortable with having, you know, action move forward for, they can motion a table.
Isn't that kind of what we did with the original, when we, when we got that put in front of us?
Yes.
For the property over there by the mill?
Yes.
We, instead of voting on it, we.
We tabled it, because we needed more information.
More time, more information, and then we can do it.
And we had the ability to do that.
So I guess the, the thing is that we're not opposed to doing it, I guess the thing is, it's against our by, current bylaws, right?
I mean, we, we, we can change the bylaws, that being said, I don't think that is a good practice for us as a commission to be into, because it.
Well, we got to be able to evolve, Ken.
I'm sorry?
I said, we have to be able to evolve, and nobody was really aware of that. I mean, I, I was fine with adopting bylaws because we said we needed technically to have them, but now you just said, you know, you changed some words in there that sort of deviated from there, nobody else knew that.
That, that is actually untrue. I specifically called out that, I specifically called out that point of order.
I stand corrected, I don't remember it.
Because I knew that by changing that, adding the word action, I was changing it, so I called out that by saying, hey, look, I'm at, this is here, I put added as, you know, requiring action, so that we can still add things that are not of.
No, I think you were for it, I missed it.
So, but even if that's the case, and I'm just asking because I don't know, so, anybody jump in and tell me any difference? But if that, if we get something sitting here, we walked in here, and we voted on it, and as long as we have a majority vote, that would still be good, right?
Yes.
Or.
We'd be in violation of our bylaws.
Or we'd be in violation of our bylaws, so therefore, even if we vote on it, it's not going to, we got to wait eight days. So I guess that's my question, do we change the bylaws, or do we change it to say unless it's a majority vote? I, I don't know how that works, so.
I mean, in violation of our bylaws, the risk is probably pretty low, yeah, but that being said, the final, I think the final, um, part of it, um, the commission may suspend any one of these bylaws for the duration of not more than one agen, agenda item or meeting. So if it ever comes down to it, or we're like, we need to do this, we can just suspend it for one.
There you go.
For one item.
So we do have a catchphrase in there, or not really a catchphrase, it's, we have the ability to do that.
We have the ability to do it, it's just, it's not a good practice to be willy nilly about how we procedurally handle things. So, it, it's there, it's really there to protect us, because you don't want to.
Yeah, I, even with plenty, I don't, you know, from my collection, from I don't know how many years of this stuff, I don't recall a lot of things coming up at the last minute, where you walk in and, so if there's on the table that wasn't on the agenda, that's going to be taken care of. City council's quite the other way.
I mean, there's been a handful of times this year, December, December 15th is, is one of them, where, you know, that, that wasn't on the agenda and it was on the table, you know, like, that's, you know, and it's, it's issues like that that we're trying to avoid, where we don't.
We don't want to be caught in a catch 22.
Yeah, we don't, we don't want to be ruling on things.
I don't think there's too many things that go before this board that require instant where you have to run and do it, you know.
No, like I said, that property.
Like you said, with council, you get stuff coming in, it might come in the same day, hey, do you want to do a thing on the corner over here, want to trip with somebody? No big deal, you know, hey, we're going to put in a, a five-story tenement over here, uh, we need to blow on, yeah, so it's just not going to happen, you know? As far as willy nilly, I haven't willy nilly in 20 years, I can willy or nilly, but I can't do both.
Which do you prefer, nilly or willy? Um, that, so that, that being said, I think that covers most of that discussion. The City Hall is still, still responsible for holding all documents.
Yes.
I've, I've been checking with them prior to the, making the agenda and meeting men, or packets. It, it's, it's nothing crazy, it is just Amber was, Amber was sick, Donna was short on time, and I had to work the day after I found out about the meeting, so I couldn't, couldn't generate anything.
It's good life discussion, so we all understand, right?
No.
I mean, so, the way it's been going is, I mean, it's been pretty smooth for what you've been working with, with Amber. Why don't we just keep it that way? I mean, you may, I mean, but instead of you making out a packet, you know, I said, it is a responsibility of the city clerk.
I'm giving myself to Amber. Unless you start telling them your bylaws that, that you're reading from are preventing you from doing that.
No.
I'm not doing that. I'm just, uh, just feel more secure.
That's fine.
That I know it's going from horse to mouth, or mouth to horse, or whatever, right there.
Right from the horse to mouth? Yeah, but to Amber, if anything, I mean, Ken, you checked in with her anyways during the week.
Yep.
So.
We got people sending documents to you, we got people sending documents to Amber, that's just more possibilities for.
I mean, I mean, like I said, there, there is no real ruling either way, Ken, you know, he's a great.
Yeah, I don't want to get mired down in, in a unnecessary bureaucratic red tape, we're filled with it already with everything that we do, I'm just, I'd like to keep that to a minimum possible.
Yeah.
Just take it in business.
He already, he already checked with Amber, everybody.
Just, things going to Amber, no, no problem for me either, the, the way we've been proceeding, so.
Yeah, because like I said, you checked with her anyways, so if you're comfortable sending it to Amber, send it to Amber. Ken checks with her quite often, and you can get that, the information, if other stuff goes to Ken, you take it over to Amber anyways, and you communicate with her. I don't have a problem either way, really.
Well, I just think the City Hall is responsible to get the packet.
Oh, definitely, I mean, yeah, yeah, if Amber needs to type them up, she needs to make the packets, make sure that they're distributed properly.
City, yeah, City Hall is responsible to get that packet.
But I think that if, if Amber or Donna are not able to do it, I mean, and Ken taking the forefront on it, making sure those get out is.
I, I do think if we want to, I, I do think if we want to proceed with something more like that, then there needs to be an appointed secretary or a reporting secretary, not the secret, you know, not the secretary, because, you know, there's, there's laws, Michigan laws that are, that work by, require certain things of the secretary of the planning commission, and if you Google it, that's me. You know, and that, I think that there are still some expectations with that, and, you know, my name being attached to someone else's work is not really something I'm comfortable with.
Your name isn't attached to the agenda for the planning commission meetings.
And someone looking at that would assume it was generated by the secretary.
I would never assume that.
My, my, my understanding has always been, you know, it's one of those deputy clerk is the one that generates it.
Right. That's how it runs, that's how Memphis runs, the deputy clerk is responsible to, to send the minute, the agendas out and the packets.
I don't really think anybody's going to come after you again and tell you truth.
I mean, I, I'm just saying, like, that's not, that's not something I'm comfortable with.
You don't have, I mean, your signature isn't on here, so you're not, you're, you're not responsible for this.
What is it about me generating this that upsets you so much?
I'm not, I'm, I'm just.
Ken, I think we're just seeing, it's, it's.
City Hall.
The way we've done it, it's not your responsibility.
Right.
Okay, I mean, I, I said, I was secretary for 13 years. My thing was, okay, come to the meeting, take the best minutes that I could, turn them in, and, you know, before the next meeting, the agenda had been generated and handed out. You picked up a lot of the slack, and Amber is probably kind of letting things slack and looking at it and seeing what has to be done. That is part of her job. If you're willing to assist and do what you do, fabulous. I'm just saying that it is not your sole responsibility to make sure that the gen, that the agenda's generated, okay?
And Amber might have something that was turned in to the city that you don't have.
I, I checked out there before generating.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
And I, I've come up there before I generate, I'm okay, everything, anything I need to add.
Ken always checks in with me and says, I, you know, I mean, the, the, the system that, that Ken and Amber have, I like.
It's, it's worked well for.
It's worked well, and I like to stay that way. If there's something that you're turning into Amber.
Right.
Um, just touch base, you know, when I said Steve's comfortable with getting it to Amber, just touch base with Ken and say, hey, I dropped off some stuff in Amber, so next time you check with her, see if there's anything there.
I mean, don't, don't even have to do that, if, if it gets to Amber.
No, I'm not going to start doing it underhead layers, I, I avoid even more.
But I think the system that Ken and Amber have has worked so far.
That's what I think.
Yeah. Do you understand what I'm saying?
What, are you talking to me? I'm sorry, I had something.
The, the system that you and Amber, sorry, the system that you and Amber have is a good system.
All right.
Yeah. It's worked this way, it's worked this far. If you, and I see if you drop something off to Amber, Ken's going to get it anyways.
So is this, is this, I know we're on communication, we are jumping down.
No, that's what the, was.
Sounds like you just got her generation of notifications.
That's what we're working on, yes.
Okay.
Right. Are we all okay with that?
Yeah, I am.
Yeah, absolutely.
You have to motion that or anything, or?
No.
No.
Okay.
All right, moving on. Going on to the unfinished business here. Um, I know we touched on it a little bit in regards to, uh, the code of ordinances.
Hmm.
We touched on it, I mean, that's what you say, you want to redo it a little bit more on that?
Uh, yeah, I had, I had put it, I had put it on the agenda with the, with the thought that we could discuss it a little more thoroughly, prepare ourselves for the, the next step of the review. That being said, I did meet with, uh, I did meet with our lawyer, uh, last Thursday, and just discussed, um, discussed how we proceeded with the conceptual part of the review. He did advise that we send them a letter just clarifying, um, where we're at in the review process.
Which is what this is.
This is what this is here?
Which is, that's what that is there, yes. Um, so attached to the letter would be a portion of our code of ordinances specifically relating to the condominium projects. It has all of the definitions as used in the section, and then it gets into the conceptual plan, the preliminary plan, the final plan, and then underneath the final plan, there are just general requirements of a condominium project, um, underneath it, so, um, my, my proposed letter is in, uh, is in front of you. Um, we, we could sign it as a commission, we could have Tom sign it, I just put my name since I was generating it, um, but, um, I did word it very.
Carefully.
Care, carefully. Um, um, on December of 29th, 2023, the planning commission approved your conceptual site plan, the conceptual site plan. This approval is not a requirement of a conceptual plan, nor is it an action the planning commission is authorized to take under our code of ordinance, and as such, should be taken as something more than an acknowledgement by the commissioners present at your December 13th discussion, that they have no further comments or questions. As of this time, you may proceed with the preliminary plan portion of the review process as outlined in Section 150.109 of our code of ordinance, attached as part of the condominium projects related regulations. Alternatively, if you would like another meeting, the planning commission will be happy to provide verbal feedback and guidance in relation to our code of ordinance and the review process. Um, I, I specifically said the commissioners present, present at your December 13th discussion, as they were not present, uh, on the 29th, and no commissioner was present at that time was able to address them. That was my only, uh, that was why I specifically worded it that way.
Okay.
So do we have to vote on this letter?
Um, we, we could vote on it, I, I don't know that it's required.
I just send the letter, I mean, it's not changing anything, it's not a courtesy call, so I'll water them.
Okay. Okay.
Do you want to sign by?
I think, I think they've already got notification that we gave them the nod.
Yeah, I was going to say, did we discuss that last?
But this is, you know, this is crossing the fuse and that, yeah.
Well, who's going to sign this letter?
Right. Do, do we want to sign it as the commission?
Well, that's what I, yeah, I.
Well, let Tom sign it. He's a chairman.
Yeah.
Line with me.
Actually, you know, both of you can sign it.
Yeah.
There you go.
Yeah.
There you go. Generate it, go ahead and pencil your name next to it and sign it.
They'll sign.
I wasn't at the meeting on the thirteenth, so.
Nor was I.
I hope.
Nor was I, but we discussed it very heavily on the twenty ninth, so.
Yes, well.
I'm very comfortable this time.
I agree.
Okay. I think you beat him up pretty good.
I don't, I don't know that we actually discussed it on the twenty ninth. We definitely discussed the process of it, but I don't know that we ever got into.
Well, we had, we voted on it.
I thought we did discuss it pretty.
I thought so.
I thought so, and we even had.
We got the yeas and the nays.
Yeah, we even discussed.
It might say it's second anyway, I mean, you know, it's discussing more.
I mean, like you said, I think John brought up some stuff, I think Bart clarified some things.
Right, we discussed it on the twenty ninth.
Yeah, I think we did. We know what they're, it says based on what we thought it was, which is a conceptual plan. And then as they bring us more, the next step, then there's more to discuss, but.
How much, I mean, how much more is that plan really gonna change? It has the setbacks, it has the water main on it.
Well, you mean the plan they've.
Mm-hmm.
It's probably not gonna change a lot, other than.
That was my fear.
If, you know, like per se, like, you know, they give a conceptual pa- plan. They did that with the houses that they built, okay? And in the conception, when they talked about it, they talked about the house having, houses having basements. They started building them, they're on slabs. There were some people that were irritated with that, and it's like, it was a concept. This is what we think they're gonna look like. Yes, we're gonna build a house, it's gonna look exactly like this? No? Yeah, based on water table costs and everything else, yeah, we're putting on a slab, and you know what? I know a couple of people about, and they're happy to be on a slab. You don't have to worry about a slab.
I think some are on basements too.
Huh?
There's some basements.
So anyways.
Some of them have basements now.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm on a basement and it floods every heavy rain.
Anyway.
I can go swimming in my basement.
Well, they paid for it, so that's their, that's their option. Yeah, so it's just their option. So anyways, sometimes, yeah, I don't really see them changing anything other than, you know, Bart talking about, you know, the water being in a loop. Um, you know, sewer ties in via the T, da 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 da, you know what I mean? It's it's, and Bart will work with them on all that. So I think that, you know, us moving on, I think we have enough information without beating a horse to death. That is, that we're good, you know?
I think we, if that plan does not change much, I think we failed them in our review process, unfortunately. Um, there is a lot of parts of our ordinance that that plan does not comply with.
Well, let me, let me address that very briefly then, because I I studied this quite extensively.
Yeah.
Talked to Mr. Wilson quite extensively, because he's the, or was the planning commission rep from council. Just very brief, I'm gonna give you my take on it, because I had read through it all, I looked through all my pulled all my agendas from the planning commission meetings, all my agendas from city council meetings, almost the last two years. I'm satisfied with it. I think the order's been adequately addressed. We had over half a dozen council meetings between that and and the planning commission. We are on record in the minutes of having our input from concerns, Kurt just mentioned, that were addressed from citizens, no one mostly talked to me to put sidewalks on Pratt, which weren't on the original plans, which were on the plans that were reviewed here last time. In addition, as Bart said, I mean, uh, as Kurt said, you know, the DPW, he's, Bart's always right there looking at this. I mean, he knows where all the sewer lines and everything are buried, and the bodies as well, probably. Uh, but I really, I don't see the benefit upsetting this project anymore. You know, subject to the interpretation of words in the ordinance. Uh, when everything's been adhered to in good faith by both parties. You know, I'm not anticipating any challenge from the builder, from the city, from Memphis or the state. You know, my position is to keep moving forward. And the the kicker is the final plan, in our ordinance. We have opportunity to review all of this. They have to give us stamped architectural blueprint plans. They're gonna show every crosswalk, every sewer cover, every sidewalk, every elevation, everything that the drain commission wants, everything that the grand hoo-ha's that our city hall on. So as part of that final phase that's in the very end of those ordinances for the condominium projects, which, you know, you outlined in there, we have another opportunity to review anything that's gonna give us heart. So I don't want to spin our wheels, our our anymore. Let's move forward with it and.
I I have no.
Live with it.
I have no, I have no problems with condos. I don't, the the project itself does not mind, bother me. I just want to make sure that we are adequately reviewing it and adequately doing our duty to, you know, the city and our neighbors.
Well, it's my opinion, Ken, that we have done this step. So it's just my opinion.
My fear is they, Mr. Wilson specifically, he kept using the phrase, they don't want us to proceed if we're going to reject the proposal. And I don't think this, that as presented, this has passed the preliminary review.
Well, I disagree with that, and he's talking about phase two, not the housing thing.
You haven't seen the preliminary ones.
I'm I'm saying if they don't change.
From the conceptual.
From the conceptual, which his whole thing was, I don't want to proceed if we're gonna, if you're gonna reject it. The conceptual, there's many standards it does not mean in our code of ordinance. And I think without us having specifically reviewed everything prior and talked to them and then given them feedback.
So, so the thing is, so we gave them approval on their conceptual. Now, the preliminary, they haven't handled the same thing on the preliminary, where they've gone to their engineers and done all of the backbone work. So that's, that hasn't even got to a shot. So from conceptual to preliminary, when that preliminary plan hits, then it's time to study again.
Right, I think that's where we're gonna pick more of the bobby's up, Ken.
That's where, that's when you start picking.
That's what I was interested, that's what I was.
That's when you start looking and making sure that everything's in compliance, and like I said, I'm sure their engineers probably know our code of ordinance is better than I do. And, you know, I was part of writing that twenty-three, twenty-four years ago when this thing was written. So.
So the preliminary. This is just an idea, this is what they're thinking of doing.
I I mean, I I understand that it's just an idea, but I don't, I don't know what, I don't feel like we provided them adequate feedback, that's.
I think Mark is very happy, that's building.
They didn't, well, I don't think they wanted any more feedback than to say, this is.
Well, they, you want to say, can they, they have these, aren't their plans built?
They got feedback two years ago when they approached planning. Doesn't it say that preliminary, this is always, the conceptual is supposed to be a verbal feedback? And I think we provided that.
And you don't even need that.
Well, I mean, that's what it says in our things, that we we were.
You don't have to have a.
Right, so so that's not even part of the discussion.
Yeah, I think we've done that. I mean, I'm I'm confident.
Absolutely. Somebody bounces idea around many times before they actually said, okay, you architects start drawing me up some plans every time you hear a roll.
And I get what you're saying, Ken do it to a point, but they have to come up with that next step before we can even.
Right, to make us happy and to make sure that they cover these pros.
And I think you're, by saying that, I'm sure their engineers read these, they probably know exactly what they need to include in.
Well, because they've been working on this for several years, with the houses. This was phase two, the condos were phase two of the development over there.
Right, and that's basically what we're talking about here, is the phase two project.
And what are, so what are your concern, like, what are you concerned that we haven't done?
I I I just don't think we adequately reviewed our code. I mean.
But what specifically, Ken? What what's the?
The buildings are too tall, they're too close to the property lines, the road's too narrow.
Can you show that in our billing codes?
I can. Uh, residential multiple, uh, if you want to pull up the.
Yeah.
Hey, Ken, while you're doing that, what I would like to recommend, if you don't mind, put together, put this together, highlight it, and and put it together for the next packet, or even to send out to us during the week, so we can all be enlightened to what it is that you're finding, because it's great, you're doing this deep dive research.
Yeah.
But, you know, again, and the conceptual uh, plan is always noted as the paper napkin.
And I'm I'm on board with it being the paper napkin. My fear is they're perceiving it as more.
No, and that's, that's, that, you're right, and that's good, so document this, highlight it, and send it out to us, and that can even be forwarded as a courtesy to the guys to say, you know, we kind of noticed this, so you might want to take it into account for your preliminary designs to be updated, right?
If you.
Just to make sure they capture it.
Right.
Like that.
Yeah, that's the best way to approach that. Here we go.
Yeah, keep going, sort of closer so you can see it, and scroll down a little. It's really hard to see, but right there, the setback on, oh, look, better, might be better. So it's far, can I go down further?
Yeah.
Right there, you can see the setback from the property line is twenty feet. Uh, minimum yard setback per lot in feet rear for residential multiple is thirty, so that's ten feet too close to the property line. Um, the um.
So, but I'm looking at that as this, it's, okay, so property line, but then it's twenty foot setback from a swale.
What's the swale?
So this is your swale, yeah, the property line is actually, I mean, I guess.
The prop, the swale is, uh, what is that?
It drains the property.
It's a drain.
Yeah.
Right, that's what I'm seeing. Uh, existing eighteen foot wide grating and surface drain adjacent, typical. So that's eighteen, so it's thirty-eight feet from property line to property line.
Perfect, there's one of them off the board. Um.
And I think the roads, I, if I remember correctly, there's supposed to be sixty feet of property available, because the road is.
For the.
Twenty feet, and then you need so much on each side.
You're supposed to be right away on either side.
Right, the right, I believe the right away is sixty, but the paved width of a multiple family residential street is fifty-one.
Right, okay. Scroll this way?
Yeah, what does that say there?
Twenty-five.
Up here?
Yeah.
You can zoom in more if you want.
So you're saying that that road should be.
Oh.
But it's it's not the road, it's the even on both sides of the road as well.
Yeah, so I think if you look, it's twenty-five.
The actual pavement is not gonna be fifty feet wide.
So it is fifty feet. It's twenty-five, twenty-five, or actually, say, twenty-five each side, it's seventy-five feet.
That's the, that's the property is seventy-five.
Yep. That's the road right away.
Pavement width measured from face of curve to face, or face of curve to face of curve, fifty-one feet.
Oh, wow, that's pretty, pretty wide.
That is pretty wide.
And I mean, the average car is seven feet, so, you know, the two, two cars next to each other is fourteen feet.
So you're saying there should be parking on either side of that road?
Um.
I don't think they're do, I don't do, I don't, I think there's gonna be no parking on that, because that's.
Well, they're just, that, that.
It's also an emergency uh, way.
Well, I'm trying to figure out why, why, why does our bylaw say fifty feet? That's a pretty wide road.
Obviously, M nineteen's like thirty-three feet.
That's what I mean, that's a.
I'm not saying, I'm not saying that like that's perfect, because I I looked up multiple, multiple other communities have much closer, like thirty-five feet. But I'm saying it's not twenty-five either, you know, and that was, I would have liked to have been able to discuss that with them.
Gotcha, so that's twelve and a half feet basically each lane.
Right, which means no parking on the street.
No parking on the street.
Because that's considered a fire lane, because this is a condo community, a condo complex.
And the average emergency vehicle's what, eleven feet or something, you know, so like you.
Right. So this needs, so, well, twenty-five feet, I mean, that's, everywhere I've been where I travel, you know, and because I have a commercial vehicle, so I'm only allowed to park in certain areas. And I I have building, I mean, U of M is one of them, I can't park on the street.
Mm-hmm.
Because it's only so wide, and emergency vehicles have to get down there. Ann Arbor is notorious for no parking zones.
So that's, that's an, I see where that could be something we have to look into further.
The more, the city engineers review these plans, right? I'm I'm assuming that our city engineers know our bylaws and our codes.
I I would assume this, I would assume so.
I would, I would assume that they would know that, so.
And all that takes place at the final phase, the city engineers, before they stand, before they sign them.
Right, right.
Right, so, I mean, we gave them the preliminary, and when we gave them the conceptual plan, they still need to do the preliminary plan, and once we go through with that, and we, and we and we uh, go down and do our other little tick marks on it, and saying, okay, here, I mean, before they get to the, the final plan is where we say yea or nay.
And I'm, 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 I'm understanding that. I'm not, I'm not debating that. My only, my only qualm is that I don't know that I I don't know that they understood our ordinance and its proceedings, and I'm afraid that we presented it in such a way to cause confusion.
I think with this letter, it might kind of, and were you intending on take, um, this letter and?
And, yes.
And the by, um.
And the code of ordinance.
And the code of ordinances.
Yes, I look, I mean, I guess you could expand that, but fifty feet just seem very wide.
I mean, you're talking about a hundred, what, a hundred and twenty-ish cars to our community? They don't, they need places to park. If they have gas, they'll need somewhere to park, you know, there's, there's.
That's why they have driveways. They've engineered the parking for that garage and these driveways. They've got to have accommodations.
I like the sidewalk, you said that's something that was added? I think that's, that's nice.
That's on Pratt.
Oh, okay, because there's a sidewalk right there.
Yeah, that's on the different part of this phase two.
I like side, I mean, I mean, I live, I mean, there's so much traffic, I mean, and there's a lot of town, there's a lot of people, want, want their dogs, want their kids.
My, I, yeah, I just want to make sure that we're providing them with an adequate review, and.
Ken, I have a conversation with Larry about this. He's in touch with the DPW, and they're in touch with this builder. And I think, you know, if you talk to Larry, it will be convinced that they follow our code. They they gave us conceptual pa- plan, now we're looking at, we're waiting for the preliminary, and let's make sure the preliminary matches our code.
Right. Um, that, that being said, another thing that I caught, and I, this is like an hour of reading, I didn't scour everything. The proposed buildings are are too tall. Their thirty feet are are maximum height's twenty-five. So like, I, we, I just want to convey that we want our code followed, that's.
Or do we give them a variance?
Or or they can ask for variance.
Either's fine. I mean, I'm sure we would give them one, I mean, I mean, I don't, I don't see without any. They're surrounded by houses, right?
I mean, you're not.
The condos.
Do the lake.
I mean, the condos are in the middle, there's houses all around, I I mean, I don't think five foot's gonna make any difference. But I mean, that's just my opinion.
I mean, it's, it's more about the adherence to code than it is anything else, like.
Like you said, if they want a variance, they can ask for a variance. They can look at the road and say, okay, well, what's the standard, like you said, M nineteen's thirty-three feet wide.
Right.
Fifty, fifty's big. Put there, you put the center lane in?
A turn lane?
Let everybody park in the center of the road.
It'd be the suicide lane like they used to have on Grash.
I remember that before they.
The center lane on Grash was the suicide lane, it was the passing lane.
So was the road.
You had, you had a lane that went north, or actually, east one one west, and the center lane was for passing.
Hmm.
So as well, let's get out in the center lane to pass, well, somebody was passing on the other side, so they called it the suicide lane.
Fascinating.
So we good on that?
I'm good on that.
Okay.
Okay, we want to move along, or, um, we could send your copy, Ken, if you'd like.
I can print a new one.
Want to print a new one, and then?
And I'll just leave it, it's a Hallmark version.
Okay, that works. All they didn't want, thanks for being so thorough, Ken.
Yes, thank you.
Yep, you're up the chart, appreciate it.
Wanna, all right, master plan. We done with the ordinances, or you don't want, want to touch on something else on that, Ken, or?
I, I mean, as long, as long as we review the ordinances and know what's expected of us and the builder, I'm happy, that's.
Okay.
I don't mean to throw a wrench in anything, I just want to follow.
Your opinion, well, your on this mission as, and your opinion matters, that's the whole thing, and that's why we're here discussing it. That's how I see it.
Ken, where do we leave off on the master plan?
Um, Steve emailed me his proposed changes, I want to say section, section three. I, I have not had time to type them up. Um, I think we looked at them though, and we were, I think.
They were typed up, they're PDF form.
I meant the uh, on the, on the master plan itself.
I think they were, I hope everybody got a copy of.
I think you brought them to me.
Yeah, that was a, that was a couple, that was like.
There was four pages, there was seventeen, nineteen, nineteen, and twenty, and one, and then twenty-two, I believe. Yeah, I think I passed out hard copies last night.
I I think so.
So everybody should have a chance to look at those. Make your changes or suggestions or adjustments. That was just intended to be a rough draft, redo of those.
Now, to go back and find that. Is that on Dropbox, or?
It might not be if you present.
I think it is. I think it is, and the label was such, date seventeen.
Yeah, I think we were.
It should be, maybe it's December, was it December thirteenth?
Twenty-two.
Maybe it's back in, December thirteenth, or twelfth.
Does one?
I remember seeing all of them.
That shows me eight minutes.
See, it's immediately for that, actually. Because I remember we looked at it.
It looks like it there, no, it looks something like that.
Where did we put it, Ken? Uh, bullet points index being Memphis Code of Condom Red Line bylaws. Was it that far, or was it October?
Oh, I should know that.
I thought we went over them all and we kind of.
Because I always thought we put them under, I thought we always put it under, I mean, it's under. Cause I always thought we'd put them under, I thought we always put it under, I mean, it's under recreational.
Shouldn't be, that's, that's for documents, not.
Yeah, that's just for documents. The only other place it would be was, um, on the master plan, previous versions, this one here is dated, uh, November, and this one's August.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's all I have on that. See your hand wrote them.
No, they're typed up.
Uh.
They're on a word document, that's the way I saw them.
That being said, I can, I can type those up and put them in the master plan prior to the next meeting.
All right, let's table that, then I, uh.
Well, did anybody have any issues with it? That was the idea.
I didn't see any problems with it, I liked it, you know, the verbiage was a lot better than what was.
I don't care, I wanna know, it was the opportunity for everybody to look at it, if you wanted to add or subtract, or multiply them, or whatever.
The only thing I saw, which I think, I think we made that decision at the meeting, was we're changing the language from assessor classifications to zoning classifications, correct? I think that was the only thing.
I don't recall specifically the conversation, so I can't really speak to it.
Okay.
Cause we had a table, cause we had the, the rest come through, so.
We had who come through?
Um, I think we tabled, I think we looked at it, but then we have the lot split that we.
Oh, right, yeah, that's right.
Yeah, so I think it was the meeting before last, cause I remember going over it, and we changed some of the stuff, cause I, 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 that's what I remember.
Yeah, that's true.
Yeah, cause we had the lot split that, um, that came up.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, for the fee moving.
Mm-hmm, yeah, exactly, so. That would be like August. When did we do the lot split? Here it is, proposed, page fifteen.
Thought it was good.
I think that, I think, yeah, that's a different page, it's the previous section.
Yeah, that was the first one that I did in the series.
That was August.
So it followed that.
So that would be September. So that, cause this is the, that's the minutes, that's all I have right now. Updated resolution. Yeah, besides master, section two master plan redlined.
Yeah, I got them all right here, do you want me to zap them over to you? Yeah, it's page twenty one, regional land use, nineteen twenty, existing zoning, uh, nineteen overview of land use, and seventeen existing land use. And I got, these are dated eleven twenty seven.
I didn't see it in there.
Eleven twenty seven, twenty three.
That's when you sent it over, so that's.
Well, that's, that's the date on the document.
Eleven twenty seven, so that would have been after our November meeting.
Yeah, probably, cause that's.
I was gonna say, if they weren't in the December first December month.
And then the December thirteenth meeting didn't really happen.
Right.
Yeah, cause it's not on there, so.
And we, I know we didn't see it on, on that.
Do you want me to send those to you, just for, would that work, if I send to your email?
Yeah, you can send them to the email, and I'll look them up.
I sent something out, and you, you respond back, send it over with me.
Which email did you send it to?
I don't know what it was.
Okay.
Whatever, whatever had been sent, cause I mean. Looks like I sent to you too, Ken.
Yes, you had sent them to me.
All right. I guess, um.
That could have just been cow cash.
Could have been.
I hate the cow cash.
I don't know, I sent something to our, I sent something to Antara in regards to a questioning disposing of a couch, and they said, you're not on our mailing list, so they kicked back my email. So, guess where it ended up? On the curb, guess where it ended up? In the truck.
Yeah.
I'm all happy with it. All right, so.
Well, if you're not putting a hospital for your truck, they'd pretty much pick it up.
Okay, that's what I found out from another, from another resident. So, it's, um, this is gonna take a bit to, for you to download, put it in the Dropbox. I don't have a copy of it here. Let me see it.
We, I mean, we can table it.
Yeah, let's ta- um, let's table the master plan until we get that in, uh, in our next packet for our next meeting.
And then we can vote.
And then we can vote on that, and vote on, uh, vote on it or adopt it. I mean, right here is, well, here it is, um, well, this is Memphis metal, I don't know this, I'm not, never mind. All right, yeah, let's table, uh, table it.
I'm making a motion to table review of the master plan.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? All right, we're tabling it to our next meeting, when is that, Ken?
Yeah, that would wrap up section three.
Yeah, that would wrap that up.
That's, yeah, I remember you saying that, if we get this done, we're.
We're pretty good on that one. When is our next meeting, what date, what day is it?
In February?
Is that on February?
The third's like a Sunday, so that would be like the eighth or something.
She uses it for Wednesday after the first Tuesday.
Yeah.
Right. The Wednesday after, after the city council meeting, this, this Wednesday after.
Oh, Valentine's Day, right?
That'd be Valentine's Day? Oh, oh, okay. Well, bring a box of candy for Bart. All right, so we'll table it February fourteenth, our next meeting. That works for me. All right, moving on, designated city provide email.
I'm looking forward to that. The emails. Cause I don't actually, they go on the, right now, the email that everyone goes to.
I know, that's right. Well, I mean, Ken and I were working on that, um, the city won't, um, I talked to, I think, Amber on it, Amber's getting emails through, through the city Comcast, and she said it's not possible, she uses her own Gmail.
Well, can we just create?
You can create your own email, I mean, Gmail, either ATNT dot net, or whoever your IS, whoever your internet service provider is, just make it a separate email specifically for city business, and then get those.
You have to create another email, I mean, I only have four email addresses.
I have six. I'm gonna use the same one I got, cause I mean, if somebody wants to. That's, that's your personal, that's.
Calling through my personal email.
This is just a recommendation, this is from what we.
Everything they want.
Yeah, that was just something that we went to.
It was just from the class we went to.
He gave an example of, and I'm not saying you or me or any of us have anything to worry about, but he gave an example of, because someone used their personal email, and they went through it, and it went in front of court, and there was a lot of stuff.
It actually caught, it actually ended up.
Created a, yeah.
It was a, uh, yeah, it created a lot of problems.
Who knows what people have sent to their email, this particular person, they got bound up and some things that probably shouldn't have been on there, and so it created, it created a bigger problem.
Mine's pretty safe and pretty clean, so. Okay, I mean, I said.
So you talked about how awkward it is to just read someone's emails with a judge.
So we're supposed to submit to the city, like our, our, I mean, for email?
If you create, I mean, if you wanna use your personal email, that's fine, we're just, just from what, um, John and Ken.
Come on, I got a two bar of Pops with Charlie Gardner.
Yeah, there's so, there's so many exciting things on my email.
Right.
Then you don't have to change it.
I mean, like me, I have.
I get an email from Shutterfly at least three times a day.
I got, I have a Gmail, I have a Hotmail, I have my company email, I have an ATNT email, I got a Google mail.
I have a Gmail, of course, nobody ever sends me an email.
Yeah, so we can, I'm using this.
But in every one, because I'm sick and tired of people asking for my email, and then I, and I, right now, I have two hundred and fifty nine emails in, in my Google email.
So if we provide a different email.
If you provide a different, if you, at your choosing, provide a different email, um, send it to Ken, he'll create a new list, give it to Amber so she can put it in the, um, in the file.
Or we can just keep the one we have.
Right.
Or keep the one you have, it's your personal preference.
Yeah, maybe that would be fun, someone went through my emails from the last thirty years.
I don't think I want another, I don't want another email with us to have to work out.
I mean, that's, it's just, it was just a rec, you know.
There's a recommendation from that, but we don't.
Recommendation from the, from the class we went to.
Alright, yeah.
Good option if, uh.
I mean, right now, I just cleaned out my Gmail, and I'm already sitting at five hundred and forty two, and I just cleared it Monday.
Need to start unsubscribing, man.
I know, you know, I feel that.
You sent out a Sunday morning, and, and go through it, okay, click on it, comes up, scroll to the bottom, unsubscribe.
Well, what's nice now is I just.
Subscribing.
Select all, delete, and get rid of them.
There you go.
So, all right. Moving on, got that done, all right. Any comments from any of the commissioners, or the mayor, or the city council?
I have something that is totally unrelated to what we've been talking about, but, um, coming through town from the north side, I'm seeing banners, dispensary banners, two on each side of the road.
I noticed that too.
I think those are, um, I don't think those are on the property that belongs to those people.
Oh, they're the boulevard, you're saying?
Yeah, it looks like they got pop wars going. Are they, are they within the city limits on?
Oh, yeah, they're, they're right on, they're right against the road, I mean, it's one of those, are they within the boundaries of the, the property, I mean, it's one of those, if you look at, um, on the, on the east side of the road, it's, you know, I mean, their property goes all the way to the end of the fence.
It looks so.
Is the boulevard theirs? No. Are they using it to stick their flags in?
It just looks so cheap and tacky, it's, it's terrible, it's terrible.
It does, yeah, I agree.
Walk in, walk in and tell them that.
Then you cross over, and then, then the doghouse has one, and the movable feast has one, and.
So we have banner wars going downtown.
We have bylaw.
There is a sign ordinance, there is one.
What does it say about that?
What does it say?
That was.
Cause they're temporary. Because they're, like, the, the whole thing with those flags, that's involved in the last ten years where you've seen those.
Yeah, where's the guy that goes up and snakes around? Where's that guy? Yeah.
Gumbo, Gumby, the old Gumby.
Yeah, we want that guy back.
Well, what does the sign ordinance say? Can we get rid of those things?
I don't recall it off the top of my head, that was what I brought up in that one way.
I remember you, you were talking about the Joyology sign that was sticking out too far.
Cause it's on the sidewalk.
It's, it's over the sidewalk, and.
Wait a second, over the sidewalk, where?
On.
Cause that sticks out from the building, which the building.
You're talking about the sign that's on the sidewalk?
Yes.
Okay, well, then we better get rid of the signs that are in front of all the rest of the buildings in the commercial district.
Real, yeah, I know.
Maybe cause they're all over the sidewalk.
Right.
So I mean, you know, pick your fight.
Well, I think.
First, let's start with the attorney, who's his, his is hanging over the sidewalk this way on a cable.
Yeah.
I'm just.
Pick your fight.
I'm just talking about aesthetics, and the impression that, that people get when they come into the town.
Hey, look at, there's a pot shop, cool.
Hey, there's two pot shops.
Where the side, are, are they, are they on the right of way?
No, I mean, they're between the sidewalk and the road, they have, there's two signs on one side, and then Joyology went right across the street and put two signs on the other side.
On the other side, so.
So there's four signs, it's just something in the sidewalk.
Eight foot banner things.
Okay. Are they, are they on private property?
Well, I don't know, I, I mean, technically, that's not, that's actually right of way, but is it, I don't know how that works.
Well, if it's between, is it between the sidewalk and the road?
It's between the sidewalk and the road.
That's the city.
Technically, that's.
No, no, your, your property goes to the middle of the road on that nineteen.
To the, yeah, it's just easement.
Yeah, you, you have given the right of way easement.
To the ci- to, for travel?
To the, yeah, to the city.
Yeah.
Okay.
So.
But you can technically stick a sign right between the sidewalk and the street and go.
Technically, you can't stick a sign that says yard sale there either, but it happens all the time. You can't put a placard on a telephone pole that says. You're not supposed to, on a telephone pole, you're not supposed to stick a little piece of paper to it.
Right.
I, I'm just saying.
Because the linemen have to climb the pole, they do.
It just makes the town look so cheap.
They're just, they're temporary signs, yeah, and they're just up there all the time, but yeah, they don't take them down.
They're huge.
Yeah, they're ten, twelve feet high, and they're in a flag.
And it's four of them, that within.
I think like, somebody wants to put up two, and then somebody else decides to put two more.
Well, actually, the, uh, the, the one on the, the one on the left side of the road had signs that were worn up and beat up, torn up, looked like crap. I made a comment to them, I said, your flags need to come down because it looked like crap. Joyology put up two brand new ones that say dispensary, and then they put up two brand new ones on the other side of the road.
Now, is that, is that, I mean, I don't know if that's, I don't know what the rule is on that.
No idea what's in there, what it's about. Give me something to read your ordinance book there.
Yeah, I mean, give me something, we'll read this tonight and find out over.
Check into it.
It's, it's embarrassing, it's embarrassing to me.
Our point is very valid, you know, we need to start making decisions as a planning commission on where we want our community to go. I mean, there's the high end, the high road, and the low road, and this is just, we keep letting stuff slide, this is taking us down, and then there's gonna be the next thing, we're gonna say, well, it's just this, that takes us down another notch, and, you know, how far down do we wanna go?
And how many more signs?
We gotta pick and choose our battles, and let the little fish swim, but, you know.
I think this is, I think this is a big, it's, it's a big.
We did a very good job of redoing that road that we have going, it, it looks very nice and classy, the roads are nice, the curves, the grass, and really, really, I can't wait till they do the other side, cause I just, whenever that happens, I just think it's gonna make our town look so much upscale. So you're right, like putting those signs, it's, ah, I don't know if it's legal or not, I, I will take that to see if I can figure that out, give me something to do.
I moved here because it was a nice farming community, and, you know, if I wanted that crap, I moved to Centerline, right?
And that, it just cheapens the image that we're trying to portray here, as a small, as a small family oriented community.
Exactly.
We have four signs within twenty feet of each other that say dispensary.
Right, do you think you have them there for so long that then?
Right, then, yeah, there could be something, so let's, yeah, let's look into that.
Technically, you're not supposed to throw a four sales sign out. You're not supposed to have any sign in there, like you see, you bring it up above a signage that's over the sidewalk. And everything in our central business district has a sign over the wall.
Aside from the signs, guys, we need to target the res, the, the type of residents we want in our community. What are the, what are the type of residents we want in this community?
Residents?
Yeah, that's, that's what we're talking about here.
Law-abiding, understanding people that, you know, follow the laws. Good answer, Kurt, I mean, yes, I would hope we would get that at least. Yeah, but we don't have that, not a hundred percent, anybody would go near it.
If I was gonna buy a house, if I was looking to buy a house in Memphis, and I saw those four pot, dispensary signs, I, I'd go someplace else.
Exactly.
No, you're, you're.
Because it's, it's an image, it's an image.
Right.
That's being portrayed, it's an image.
This kinda stuff drives home values down, and we need to drive the home values up, and get the right type of residents that wanna move to this community, right?
That's facts.
So.
Well, maybe a little discussion with the owners of the business, and concerns, staff or concerned, maybe they will be.
I don't know, I guess, have to read the sign ordinance and see if there, there's gotta be, I'm assuming there's gotta be a, a, some kind of a height limit on the side.
I think there is in that ordinance.
That are postage, that are, you know.
I've read through it before, it's been quite a while.
I'll take a look at it.
It just so, it looks so.
And the people that are going there are already on a mission, they know where they're going, it's not, some.
Yeah, we don't need to.
Hey, let's stop and get some weed, you know, so they really don't need it.
I don't, yeah, I only plowed the farm, I only plowed the farm today with somebody pulling out of a, of, of the west side dispensary.
Oh, you gotta adjourn that, or are we getting close to it?
Oh, no, you're fine. Any other comments, questions, concerns?
I'm hoping for you to adjourn.
Okay, can I get a second?
I'll second that.
Mr. Locke, got seconds, and all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Okay, being adjourned, and.